I'd like to call the Macomb City Council to order, please. If you'd please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If the clerk would call the roll, please.
Mike Whalen.
Here.
John Vajese.
Here.
Annette Carper.
Here.
Tom Cook.
Present.
Gail Carper.
Here.
Tammy Lee Brown Edwards.
Here.
Dennis Moon.
Here.
Seven present.
We have a quorum. Thank you. Counsel before you, is a consent agenda motion is in order.
Before we get to that, may I make a motion to remove the Police Department report from the consent agenda?
Okay, and you're placing that on for discussion right now, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
So moved and seconded to withdraw the Police Department report from the consent agenda, place it on the agenda for discussion. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Whalen.
Aye.
Vajese.
Aye.
A. Carper.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye.
G. Carper.
Aye.
Brown Edwards.
Aye.
Moon.
Aye.
All ayes.
Motion carried. With that in mind, the other two items are still on a consent agenda.
To adopt is published, with the exception of the police report.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt. Any discussion?
Yes, Your Honor.
Alderman Brown Edwards.
I would like to table the unfinished business for the Class R liquor license, as the petitioner is not here to answer questions.
Okay, that would be when we get to that item, if that's okay?
Okay.
Is that all right?
Thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Aye.
A. Carper.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye.
G. Carper.
Aye.
Brown Edwards.
Aye.
Moon.
Aye.
Whalen.
Aye.
All ayes.
Motion carried, thank you. Now, the Police Department report. Deputy Chief, yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, if I might?
Yes, ma'am.
The reason I wanted to remove that is I wanted to ask a question about a recent report that we heard about here, of some threats to protesters via social media. So I wanted to find out what the police had discovered about that.
All righty.
I have some handouts. Put this back on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks for having me. I'm here in response to some of the accusations that have been made by Heather McMeacon in the letter that she had written on the 27th to the City Council of July. I should have a PowerPoint. Move to the next one.
Point of clarification, on behalf of the State Department.
I'm sorry?
Point of clarification, it wasn't just the letter, but on behalf of the Department.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. In this particular incident, if you look at the City Council information that she put out there, there was no threats or allegations were investigated and looked at as far as posts. We know that one particular event that the Black Lives Matter group or the McDonough County women of McDonough County, they were going to have a march from the old Super Kmart out to Hardee's. So in response to this, they had made, they had actually canceled the march on the day that they were going to actually do it, which was July 7th. They canceled that march because of threats that they had received over the Internet.
Ma'am, you're not recognized right now. The chief has the floor. Thank you.
I ended up contacting the person that had set up that march, Celeste Townsend, made contact with her and asked her if she would send me these posts that were posted to cancel that event. So I wanted to make sure that we got as much information as we possibly could so that I could investigate. Heather had actually talked about an article that was July 8th in the McDonough County Voice. It was a carryover article that actually went to the McDonough County Choice, which is where I was able to get a copy of that article. In that particular article, if you move to that, there you go, "Cyber Threats Postpone, Peaceful Walk Across Macomb." If you look at that, I've even highlighted, it doesn't show up on there, doesn't show very well at all. But in that, I highlighted an area in there where they had said that they had received numerous threats via the Internet on a Facebook page that was wide open. So I asked Celeste if she would be kind enough to send those to me, which she did. I ended up getting 17 different screenshots of these threats that were made to that particular group. Prior to that, we had already had everything set up, we'd already had a plan in place. Anytime we have an event like this, we have a plan in place in case there's any kind of an emergency or contingency plans that we need to have. We have it in place. Same thing with a parade, same thing with any other special event that we have in Macomb. We ended up doing an IAP or an Incident Action Plan so that we can go through if there happens to be something that happens, including maybe a storm, a tornado, things like that. So in this particular incident, we already had a plan in place, but then they had canceled to set it for a different date. So I got 17 different screenshots, if you'll move to that. One more? Yes. It don't show up very good on video, so I'm glad I gave you the handouts. The handouts are not in any particular order. The video is actually on a better, they're better spelled out. So as you go through, there's different screenshots that we have. I'm going to say there's about five different individuals or six different individuals that go back and forth, that banter during these conversations. There's two that are probably the most disturbing, but I still don't believe that they meet the threshold for a charge for anybody to be charged. One of them is the little box that I have circled down there in the bottom. It comes from a Michael Grimm, and I've released all of these names because they've made these posts on Facebook, so there's no reason for us to hide any of the posts that are on here. I do not know specifically what page these were on, but this is what I was sent. So if you look there, Michael Grimm says, "I'm cool settling this one, or settling this like we did on the playground. One great game of Red Rover, only this time, you cannot break through. You and your bloodline are executed. Just my thoughts on the subject," and then LOL. So to me, that's probably the worst-case scenario in this thing that we have set up, this and then the last post that I have. But it doesn't specifically say anything about any particular one person. It doesn't talk about the Black Lives Matter group specifically. It doesn't talk about anyone specifically, he's just throwing that out there. The rest of the videos, or the rest of the screenshots, as you look through them, it's just banter going back and forth about the Black Lives Matter movement, the disagreement between the two groups, as far as one group doesn't agree with the other one. Obviously, that's how things generally work on the Internet. So if you look to the next one, if you keep moving, these are just slides of everything that I've talked about and all the stuff that I looked at through the 17 slides that were given me. Go ahead with the next one. It's very hard to read on the PowerPoint, apparently, but that's why you have copies. So as you continue on, and once again, it's banter back and forth. One group's talking about Black Lives being murdered in Chicago, and how come no one's concerned about that? And then, you know, they're going back and forth, saying that there's racist people on both sides. That's pretty much the summary of everything that's in all of those slides. You get to the last slide, and this was the picture that was actually in the article for the Journal or for the Voice, was this last one that says, "All lives splatter, stay out of the road," basically. I won't, I'll just paraphrase because it's first word. Anyway, so that's the last thing that, that's the one slide that's in there that's also somewhat disturbing, but once again, it doesn't specifically spell out one particular group. It's just, it happens to be in that string of things that go on. So if you go to the next slide there, so what I've done is I've spelled out a little bit, just so you have a general idea of what the actual statute says. In Illinois, assault definition, 720 ILCS 512-1, assault. A person commits an assault when, without lawful authority, he or she knowingly engages in conduct which places another in reasonable apprehension of receiving a battery. Then you have to go and look, what does reasonable apprehension mean? I know that everyone in here's probably heard the term of assault and battery. Technically, that doesn't exist, but generally, you have to have an intervening act. If someone comes at you, threatens to punch you, and someone intervenes, that's actually an assault, not actually a battery. Okay? So we have to look at reasonable apprehension, which means a person has to be somewhere that they can actually follow through with the threat. So assault doesn't help us here as far as trying to come up with a charge for this particular offense. The next slide, please. Disorderly conduct, 720 ILCS 526-1. I only put in the one thing that applies to this. All the other stuff in the disorderly conduct statute talks about false alarms, things of that nature, so I only covered the one thing that's in there. Person commits disorderly conduct when he or she knowingly doesn't act in such an unreasonable manner as to alarm or disturb another and to provoke a breach of the peace. So in this particular instance, these are written text messages that go back and forth. Obviously, the person's not in proximity. That particular march did not go on at that particular time. So obviously, disorderly conduct is probably not going to fall under that category for us as well either. And then if you look at the last one, this would be the closest thing that we would have as far as what could be charged in this particular instance. I will be forwarding the report that I've done to the State's Attorney's Office, and I will let them review it as well. So it's not just the Macomb Police Department looking at it, it's also the State's Attorney's Office. I'll do that report, I'll forward it to them, they'll have the opportunity to go through and look at everything as well, to determine, is there enough to make this charge for anybody? Everybody that's posted, they're out there, we know who they are. I think one or two were Macomb, one was in another state, maybe Wisconsin. So everybody's virtually around Macomb, so. The last thing I have there, if you look at that, Illinois compiled statutes harassment through electronic communication, 720 ILCS 526-1, harassment through electronic communication. A, a person, once again, there's several things under this statute, I picked out what was the closest to what we had in this particular case. I can't list out all of them because this is actually a pretty good-sized statute for this particular thing. Said, "A person commits harassment through electronic communication when he or she uses electronic communications for any of the following purposes. Number one, making any comment, request, suggestion, or proposal which is obscene with an intent to offend." I don't know that that qualifies obscene, is usually some type of, like maybe a naked picture, things such as that nature. So that doesn't really qualify under this section either. You got another five, threatening injury to a person or the property of a person to whom an electronic communication is directed, or to any of his or her family or household members. The issue that we have with this particular thing is that there's not one specific person that is put out there for this. So it's more of a group, if there's a group there. So it's really kind of infringing on what their free speech is. I mean, Facebook, everybody says everything about everyone and goes back and forth and bantered. I mean, that's pretty much the nature of the beast with Facebook. We do have, as I said before, the silent walk is supposed to take effect on, or take place on August 7th. As a police department, we already have an action plan in place. We have officers that are going to be there to provide security. We don't want people off the sidewalk, but we want them to be safe as well. So we've had all of that stuff placed in motion to where we shouldn't have any issues. But if we do, we have a plan for that. Have any questions?
Thank you. Any questions for the chief? Alderman Carper.
I just want to make this really clear, to sum up what you've said about these threats, these alleged threats. And I think that the comment was made that they are threats to murder someone. Did you find any evidence that an individual made a threat to another individual to harm them in any way?
I did not.
Did you find any evidence that an individual had made a threat to another individual to harm someone's property in any way?
I did not.
Thank you. That's all I wanted to ask.
Thank you. Anyone else on the council? Alderman Brown Edwards.
Thank you for your report. I do know Ms. Townsend, and she's not, this march did not, was not with McDonough County Democratic women, nor with the Black Lives Matter. It was a totally independent group.
Separate, okay.
Yes. And I do have a copy of the disorderly conduct statute. And I would think that, especially with other incidents that have happened during protests, I would think that four, five, and nine will also be included in those, in that statute as far as if you were looking for cause.
Okay. I'd have to look because I only highlighted.
Four is, causes, provokes, or engages in any fight, brawl, or riotous conduct which disturbs the public peace or threatens the safety of any person or property. Five is, assembles or congregates with another person or persons for the purpose of causing, provoking, or engaging in a fight and brawl. And then nine says, interfere with any public gathering or religious worship. And I would think that it would interfere with a public gathering of the march.
The only thing that I was, the march never took place, so they were never able to do any of that. If they did, then that would be the reason, we could do something then at that particular time. But the march never took place at that particular time.
Okay.
So it would have had to have taken place in order to charge those offenses.
To be, to interfere, because I would think that the interference is not allowing it to occur.
That would be up to the State's Attorney's Office to make that.
Okay. What I would like for you to add those as your recommendations, four, five, and nine, when you submit that to them.
When I send something to the State's Attorney's Office, I don't give a recommendation.
Okay.
They base it off of what they know, because they're the attorneys, I'm not.
Well, you showed that one number, and so I thought that's the one that you were going to provide to them. So I was, but you're just going to give them, you're just going to give them information.
I don't provide anything to them and tell them what they need to look for. They're going to determine if there's anything there.
That was just your report to us.
Huh?
That was just your report to us.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. And I do, I have gone through these, I saw them when they were live, I contacted someone from law enforcement when it happened, and I think these are credible threats. I have, my family and I have not shown back up to the rallies because of these threats. I feel that they're serious, they should be taken seriously. I'm glad you have investigated it. I disagree with Alderman Carper that these are not viable as far as a black person who has been on that corner more than once. These are very scary to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the council?
Just a comment.
Alderman Carper.
Mr. Mayor, I agree with you, Ms. Alderman Brown Edwards. They are very serious. But from a legal point of view, they are social media statements. They do not rise to the level of any legal definition of assault, battery, cyber threat, murder, anything. There is no criminal activity made in making comments on social media. That's one of the big problems with social media, is that it's considered all free speech until it gets to a much worse level, and there's nothing that we can do about it. If the Black Lives Matter protests go out with their signs that say Black Lives Matter, and they get counter protests that say All Lives Matter, we can't criminalize either one of those because they're words, they're thoughts, they're beliefs, they are not actions.
But that's not what we're talking about, we're talking about the concerns.
But it's the same thing.
It is not, a counter protest and threatening lives is two different things.
I'm talking only about what we have here, and they are protected.
And there's not a counter protest on here, so you're speaking about something totally different.
They are protected by the First Amendment freedom of speech, they cannot be criminalized. And if you don't believe me on it, talk to Ms. Scalp.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else on the council? Ms. McMeacon, you're on the floor.
Sure, absolutely. Thank you. A couple of facts that might help clarify for the community. There's actually three separate groups doing these protests, okay? And two of them are grassroots and not organized, but they are black-led. They are a response to black community members whose children are so depressed that they felt like they wanted to do something. So the group that's up at Chandler Park, that's led by black moms or moms with black children, who are afraid to go outside their homes. And when they've been up there, even as one of the interviews for the radio, for the paper was being given last week, people were going by yelling, "White Power," and "F you." And sure, they have free speech, but that group, because they are so vulnerable and they have especially vulnerable moms and children, our racial justice coalition reached out to them to provide logistical support, marshals, and also to train some of their friends how to de-escalate, because we are to never escalate on our end, no matter how mean and hateful somebody may be to us. Sometimes people get angry and they, you know, lose track of themselves, and we understand that. But that was not our protest, we didn't set it up. We just went there to be a resource and to record as witnesses. The reason why we were aware of the threats was because some of our black members sent us screenshots, of which a lot of those are missing. And may I ask, did you ever ask editor Michelle Langout if she had any more of those, since she did the article on it?
I did not.
I would suggest you do that because many local black community members have shared images and screenshots. People from Bushnell have talked about, "Let's head over to Macomb and drive them over." And I didn't get on there soon enough to grab that screenshot before somebody pulled it down. And I wish I had. Our social media teams do try to do that, but we missed that piece of evidence. Then when a different group did it over in Bushnell, they had someone say, "Oh my God, I can't believe this, somebody get over there and take care of them." And another person talking about, "Let's just start this civil war and get over with, I'm locked and loaded." These.
Excuse me, I got to interrupt here for a second, Ms. McMeacon. Did people say this directly to you? Are you reporting what somebody else told you?
I'm reporting what's been brought to us with screenshots and such, but we didn't think you.
That's not my question. Did you hear a person make those statements that you are just repeating to us?
On the Internet, through Facebook? No.
Did you hear anybody making those statements?
I didn't hear them, no.
Did you read them on the Internet?
Yes.
Well, we don't have any evidence of that.
Yeah, it's a shame that the editor was.
And in your letter last week to us, you said that the McDonough County Voice article reported online threats by county residents threatening to murder the Black Lives Matter protest.
Yes.
And that's what we are asking our police department to investigate. And this is the information that was provided by the alleged victims of those threats. So if you have more information, I would much prefer that you show us the evidence you have than continually coming in here and repeating something that you had, but you just mistakenly do not have evidence of it that you can show us. We cannot take your word for it.
We'll take my word for it, because I saw those posts as well.
Ladies, Alderman Carper has a word.
I'm almost done, and then you can speak, Ms. Brown Edwards. Okay? Ms. McMeacon, if you have evidence to give us, then you should bring it in instead of continually coming in here and repeating what you have heard or what other people have heard and told you.
These are.
Because evidence is what we need to do investigations.
Please don't point your finger at me, I understand.
Evidence is what we need, and we need proof. And if we don't have proof, we cannot take any action in regards to any threats that any of us have heard through the grapevine.
And point of clarification, we're not asking for you to file charges against them in that letter. We are asking you to make a statement condemning the hatefulness and the vitriol. And the Southern Poverty Law Center is very clear that, and there's been over 80 Black Lives Matter protests driven into by trucks in the last six weeks nationwide. It's happened in Bloomington, Quad Cities, across the river, St. Louis, Davenport, Bettendorf. And the level of heat of vitriol that's been turned up, we don't care if people yell at stuff at us, that's not our issue. When they are talking about their guns, and they are talking about, "Hey, I've got, let's just get all the truckers together and we can take care of them, they won't be able to do anything about us." It's more about how our black community members, and to be clear, when I speak here, I am speaking on behalf of the fears brought to us. It is not our job to collect the evidence. We are volunteers, as am I. I am doing my best to bring you awareness of the fears being brought to us. Now, Celeste was holding one event, and so she was contacted and gave those, and I did help the police get in contact with her, and she gave that evidence. That's great. I never heard anything else about it until the last two days from the police. So I wasn't asked for further evidence on that, and if Michelle Langout, who's reported on it, wasn't even approached, she has a lot of evidence that she has gotten in real time from other people. But my issue, as a leader of our org, we need, because Tammy Lee has already done this, we need all of our white community members, our white leaders, right here, to say, "Any implication of violence against those peacefully expressing their First Amendment rights and enjoying their rights to peaceably assemble isn't just awful, it is unacceptable, and we expect better out of our community members, and we will bring to bear the greatest possible public consequences, even if it's just a call-out." We know you probably can't hold anyone accountable for this stuff, but if you do not set a base floor of it with community expectation, that you all actually care about our lives, and I'm going to bring up, I will be addressing the council next week, I'm going to bring you some tweets from your police chief talking about, "Hey, protesters, if you don't like it, head to Canada." Am I to believe that he cares about keeping us safe? Anyway, Tammy Lee had questions.
Alderman Brown Edwards.
I'm just disgusted and upset, and I yell back. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you.
I'll also bring up one other thing. They had a protest on Friday night, was it Friday or Wednesday? I can't remember now. But we sent some of our team members up there.
So for the record, you said "they," could you just clarify who they are?
Yeah, so the Black Lives Matter group, and they're going to be holding a weekly protest.
It's on Wednesday, is that right?
Every Wednesday night. That is not us.
Okay.
We are there to, you know, advise, provide water, logistics, whatever, if somebody gets hurt, to help, because these are young people, for the first time, many of them just beginning to learn to speak up on behalf of their black children who are very frightened in this community. And it is a very different experience for our black members living in this community. When they hear the comments, or when your silence on this stuff, it is very frightening to them. And they know, I mean, the longstanding history is very clear that when leaders are silent, it is taken as consent by people with the worst possible impulses. And I will tell you that we have trained human rights observers, that we have sent just to take, because we just thought for safety, we'll just monitor this. And each week, the vitriol has gotten worse. The trucks have gotten worse, they've gotten closer, they're smoking people out. Last time, one came by three times yelling hateful stuff, each time racist, lots and lots of racist stuff. And this guy cut across lanes of traffic, and if his foot, and I'm speaking as a former paramedic, and you know I was a good one back then and cared about traffic, right? This is what I care about, is the safety. If that guy's foot, while he was angry and leaning out the other window and screaming at us, if his foot would have slipped off that brake, some of our people would have gotten hurt. And some of them include children. So what we want out of you, first and foremost, please issue a statement condemning any implication of threats, any implication that they don't have every right to go up there and peaceably stand up for a human rights stance. Black Lives Matter is not a partisan issue, it is a human rights stance. And they are up there trying to help their children see that they care, that they're frightened, that they care, that they don't feel welcome in this community, that they care, that somebody is going to treat them hatefully. But the fact that we have a culture here now, where there are so many, at one of them a week and a half ago, when I was coming in from the north, you know, and I read about that in the letter, that guy who blew through the stoplight, he wasn't looking to hit me, you know, he almost hit me, but more importantly, he's driving like this, and being so hateful, he blew through the entire stoplight and kept going. If there'd have been pedestrians there, that would have been a tragedy. And that stoplight blowing is happening at every one of them, and also racist comments are happening. It would be great to have an actual stance come out of this body that says, "We care about even our Black Lives Matter protesters," even about even our Black Lives Matter protesters, even if we don't agree with them." But again, it's a human rights stance.
Understand.
And they deserve our allegiance too.
Ms. McMeacon, thanks for being here tonight. I'll be happy to issue a statement here in just a moment. Just a quick question, were you contacted by the city police on these last two incidents you just mentioned?
Yes, in the last few days, which I do appreciate. And again, you know, this issue is about the perception of what is tolerated here.
Understand.
Right? We need to change that, because right now, they have the idea that that stuff's okay, and every week it's getting worse. We need to say something.
Sure. Well, a couple of things, if you'll allow me. I think you may be aware, I'm not sure. I've attended several of those grassroots Black Lives Matter demonstrations at that corner and saw firsthand and had interaction with folks that you have identified as young people, very first time that they're involved in this type of activity. Would concur with your observations and have encouraged them to be active as they are. Probably know some of them very well personally that were up there. And I applaud their efforts at being involved and want to assure them that the city has their safety in mind, absolutely. Anybody peaceably assembling has every right to do that, and we will do everything in our power to assure their safety when they're engaged in that activity. You have my assurance in that. I do not want to speak for the council, but I would say that they feel the same way. Our police chief, deputy chief have those folks' safety in mind when they go to work every day. And if that's not apparent by our actions, we'll make sure that it's apparent by our actions.
If I may-
Yes, ma'am.
I do, we will send you some of the tweets and the Facebook posts from our police chief, dehumanizing people, liberals who protest, and dehumanizing people who protest Trump.
And we can have that discussion. I understand where you're coming from. So you have my assurance that our police, this community, its leaders are fully supportive of the Black Lives Matter movement here locally, and, and I would say that many of our local leaders have been up there participating. I know some of the aldermen have been doing it, city staff have been there, and I have been there for the purpose of supporting that kind of activity and supporting the cause that, that they represent, so.
Will you condemn the hateful comments as well?
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you. That's what they need to hear.
And absolutely. And I will tell you that I heard some myself. But as Alderman Carper has pointed out, that's free speech, and as egregious as it is and as hateful as it is, and how disappointed I was as a community leader to hear that, we are limited in what we can do, other than what I'm doing right now, and that's condemning it.
That's what, that's what we're asking.
Absolutely.
Again, we're not asking you to break the law or make new law. We're, we're just asking you to speak directly to those people, let them know you have every right to your opinion. Feel free to counter protest us across the way.
Well, and to that, to that regard, everyone has to do their best to be peaceable. And I am very concerned about the escalation of this. I, I think as we draw closer to a presidential election, it's likely to get more heated. And I would encourage everyone to be mindful of everyone else's right to peaceably assemble. It's absolutely essential in our community to make sure that we abide by that. We, we just can't, we can't afford anything less.
One last thing I will tell you is that we had a white man come up, and he was there to disrupt any of us from getting to engage in any of, any level of our freedom of expression. He got in our faces, refused a mask, he kept on escalating, he stood way too close. Now, we backed him off.
And the police were called, is that correct?
And we called the police when he would not, and then he just stood in the road. He just stood in the road and blocked it.
But the police responded and corrected.
Police responded, and they let him walk away. But the police left, and then he sat there in his truck the rest of the time, looking at us hatefully and scaring people. So now, a lot of those black folks who were with us last week are not gonna come back. So, A1.
Well, I'm sorry to hear that, but I just want to make clear that the police did respond and deal with the gentleman, is that correct?
It would have been better had he been given some type of citation for disorderly conduct or, or blocking the road, because maybe he wouldn't have sat there scaring everybody the rest of the time.
Okay.
We need a little more, if that'd be okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Alderman Brown Edwards, I'm sorry.
Ms. McMeacon, I wanted to let you know that I have had discussions with the mayor and the city attorney condemning hate speech and symbols of hate in Macomb, and I will provide a statement as well in the future for that. Thank you.
Thank you. We are greatly appreciative of that. That is what we ask. Please set a standard expectation. We know people are gonna violate that, and a lot of times, we can't hold them accountable. You know, if it's just free speech, it's free speech, and that's fine. But free speech that causes people to fear, expressing their First Amendment rights, that's above and beyond, and that should at least be called out. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the, this, this agenda item? Carry. Thank you, Ms. McMeacon. Does anyone wish to speak to the council under the public comment section of tonight's Hearing none, we'll move on to unfinished business. Item number one, consideration of an ordinance to create a Class R liquor license for Chicago Beef Factory. This ordinance had first reading a week ago last Monday. If the county, if the city attorney read the ordinance into the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This ordinance would create a Class R liquor license for Dan Kocel during business as Chicago Beef Factory. The business is located at 202 West Carroll Street. The office of city attorney did compile a list of record owners, sent out the required notices, posted the required notices at the property. Public hearing was conducted July 20th. We have received no communications from any of the owners within a 250-foot radius. We have requested and received background checks on both the owner as well as the resident manager. And if granted, the ordinance would recommend that the mayor issue the Class R liquor license to Dan Kocel during business as Chicago Beef Factory.
Thank you. Alderman Brown Edwards, you wanted to make a motion on this issue, I believe?
Yes, I wanted to motion to table that. Mr. Kocel has contacted the city attorney, asking or requesting that we table this item for a future date, because he is not able to be here to answer questions.
Okay. Do you have a specific date in mind?
I will have the city attorney address that being that he directed her-
Okay. A second. Alderman Vajese.
I would actually kind of clarify the motion. I make a motion to postpone the motion to approve to the committee of the whole on September 14th.
That work for you, Ms. Brown Edwards?
Again, I'd like to know what the city attorney information, the communications to Mr. Kocel, what was his suggestion?
My conversations with Mr. Kocel sort of went along with the discussions of the last meeting. He was not opposed if the council needed more time to consider the matter to the motion to either approve or deny being postponed.
Okay, thank you. I will accept Alderman Vajese's amendment.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to table the ordinance until the committee of the hall on September 14th. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
A. Carper?
Aye.
Cook?
Aye.
G. Carper?
Aye.
Brown Edwards?
Aye.
Moon?
Aye.
Wayland?
Aye.
Vajese?
Aye.
All ayes.
Motion carried. Thank you. We'll place that on for consideration on the September 14th committee of the hall. There is no other unfinished business this evening under new business. Item number one, consideration of an ordinance to amend Chapter 7, Article 10 of the Municipal Code of the City of Macomb concerning residential swimming pools. This will be first reading.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an ordinance to amend Chapter 7 of the Municipal Code concerning swimming pools. This is in direct relation to the discussion held at last week's committee of the hall meeting. Portions of that Section 7 are amended to require the issuance of a general, general building permit in relation to construction of any swimming pool. We've also added definitions for a portable swimming pool, a hard-sided pool, as well as a public swimming pool. Changed Section 7-423 to be entitled barriers, continuing to require the 48-inch above-grade barrier, but allowing portable swimming pools and hard-sided swimming pools with exterior walls that are at least 48 inches to qualify as that required barrier. The code as it, as it currently reads requires, requires two or more means of egress, and so we've added that would require the two means for public swimming pools. All other pools, which would primarily be residential, would only require one mean of ingress and egress, but would require a lockable or positive locking gate for entry. And with regard to Section 425 for ring buoys and poles, that would be required of public swimming pools only. And we've also added 426 that would permit any existing non-public or residential pools that are not currently in compliance with the, essentially the lockable ladder, would have 60 days to become compliant.
Thank you. That'll stand as first reading. We'll have that on for some further discussion at next week's committee of the whole meeting. Don't believe there's any more new business. Under committee reports, we're like an update on the complete count census for Mr. Bannon, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. We do have some more events coming up. You should see some masks on Rocky Dogs coming out shortly. Bit of, of good news and a bit of challenging news. Did get confirmation from WIU that they did get all of their residence hall information in on time to the Census Bureau, so all the students in the residence halls in the spring should be counted. So we're thankful to WIU for confirming that. The Census Bureau is looking at their timeline and will probably end non-response follow-up on September 30th instead of October 31st. So while that will still give all the students and everyone else in Macomb two more months to be counted, I would just like to put out, you know, the announcement that there is a bit of urgency. If people haven't been counted, please do fill out the census now. It will be, it will probably end on September 30th in terms of the fieldwork and the non-response follow-up. And you should see enumerators starting August 11th around Macomb, if, if not sooner. So if enumerators do come to your home, it's because you haven't filled out the census. So we would appreciate you being civil, respectful, and filling out the census. It'll take five minutes in person, so if you haven't filled it out and a numerator does come to your door, please hear them out, please fill it out. It'll help everything from roads to schools and everything in between, so.
So John, just a point of clarification here, excuse me. So they'll have proper ID, they'll be well credentialed, so that if anyone were to have any concerns about whether they're really from the census or not, that should be ascertainable through some ID process?
They should have a census ident, census identification on them, and they will have an iPhone that they will take the, the survey.
Do we have any sample credentials that we could post on the city's website?
I have one. I'm waiting to get confirmation from the Census Bureau that it's acceptable to reproduce that in public format.
Very good.
We did get in touch with someone, and we have one, but I, I just want to make sure we dot all our i's and cross all our t's before we put that on social media.
Understand. And then will they be taking precautions as related to COVID-19?
All census employees are required to wear masks, and then they won't go into anyone's home. They'll stand on the threshold, maintaining a social distance. It's entirely possible to conduct the census if they're six feet away and wearing a mask and, and able to ask the questions to the census respondents verbally.
Okay, very good. Alderman Vajese.
Actually, I did have an numerator stop by my house today, not because I didn't fill out the census, but they were looking for a resident behind my house. He was wearing a mask, he was about eight feet from my front door. He had credentials. I had a clipboard with two different forms of the questionnaire, as well as he also carried an iPhone for the questionnaire. Very professional, very well dressed. I was actually surprised to see him, but he was looking for some residence, a house near my home.
Could you tell him to come back in about two weeks? Oh, excuse me, three weeks.
Three weeks.
Three weeks.
Yeah. And they've been in touch with our office as well, trying to verify if, if certain properties have anyone living in them or not. And so we've tried to be as helpful as we can, but, you know, sometimes, especially rental properties will be vacant one week and, or one month, and then occupied the next. So we would appreciate everyone's patience and everyone's effort as, as we fill out the census.
What time of day are they calling on Northwest Quadrant?
We, we, you know, they, they haven't shared their operational schedule with us. I, I would hope it's a bit later in the day, given the, the youth demographic of that quadrant. And we'll, we'll certainly relay that suggestion, but, you know, they're, they're probably at the mercy of their workforce as well, because they, they try to be flexible with people's work schedules.
Very good. Alderman Carper.
I just wanted to ask, John, a couple of months ago, you mentioned that the percentages of response were quite low in the Northeast Quadrant and also in the Southwest Quadrant. So I'm wondering what extra efforts have been in those quadrants?
Well, we had that collaboration with the NAACP around Mount Cavalry, and we handed out flyers at Prairie View, at Village at Wheeler, and, and many of the neighborhoods around, around there. We do, I think we're about 61.4% in the Northeast Quadrant, so we have seen some improvement, about one and a half, 2% improvement. We're still at about 58% in the Southwest Quadrant. We've got some signs down there, we've got banners down there. We're gonna do, going to do an ice cream truck type event, a collaboration with the fire department and Hy-Vee, and we're gonna do it in the Southwest Quadrant to try to make sure we get some outreach out there. And we'll have probably between 500 and 600 bags prepared for WIU students, and we're partnering with campus organizations to hand those out for the Northwest Quadrant. So we'll, we'll make an effort and we'll be present. But I, I think, you know, it would also help if everyone spread that same urgency and same message of importance through word of mouth, through their own personal networks.
Well, if there's anything that I can do to help, please let me know.
Yeah, just, just keep telling people. One of your employees told me that the residents are saying, "Yes, we know the census is happening." So I, I appreciate it.
Very good, thank you. Anyone else? All right, thank you, John. All righty, Aldermanic reports. Alderman Moon.
I'll report.
Thank you. Alderman Brown Edwards.
I appreciate the deputy police chief speaking as well as Mrs. McMeacon. I would like to say, which I have said before, if you have been a victim of discrimination, racial harassment, mistreatment because of your race, sexual orientation, or identity, I believe you. My information is on the city website. I also want to thank you, Mayor, for attempting to broker a meeting between another alderman and I. I was willing and open to having a meeting, but the other aldermen seemed not to be in agreement. So I appreciate your efforts, although they had failed. Thank you for being a mediator and trying to create unity on the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Carper.
I just want to give a bit of thanks to a number of groups and individuals. I'm not gonna try to name them, because there's just too many. I've just kind of grouped them by what I've noticed. A lot of groups and, and individual people making a really positive effort to help others during this pandemic. There's been a lot of people who have made and given away masks. I've recently noticed, and maybe I haven't, it's been longer than since I've noticed it, but there are a number of hand-painted signs around town, excuse me, promoting mask wearing. I've seen a lot of groups continue their volunteer efforts, even though they can't meet in person in their meeting on Zoom. We have a, a great group of people doing food delivery to people who need it. We have people out protesting for the Black Lives Matter movement. We have people raising money for body worn cameras and for a sculpture of C.T. Vivian. We have people who are promoting safe distancing while they're shopping, eating, or in public. And we have a lot of people promoting local businesses. I think if we were to try to list everybody who's done wonderful things during this, this time of pandemic, we'd be here all night. So I hope that those people who have done those wonderful things know who they are and that I thank them very much.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Cook?
I'll report, Your Honor.
Thank you. Alderman Carper.
Yes, Your Honor. The reason that mediation was denied this week between myself and you, Alderman, Tammy Lee Brown Edwards, is because I asked for it immediately upon your speaking out against me on July 6th. I was furthermore, there was another alderman here who spoke with you and asked for that mediation, and you said you would not sit down and talk with me until you had received the public apology. So last week, when the mayor asked me if I would mediate again, I denied that. And this other alderman spoke with you and asked you why you used those racist terms when you talked about me. You said, "It is not your responsibility to educate her." She asked you again, you said, "What part of no do you not understand?" That is the reasoning that I denied mediation. If you would like to talk privately as professionals, I am more than happy to do so. one question that I asked you, which had nothing to do with race. Mr. Stout, if you'd like to contact me tomorrow, I'd be happy to explain further. Thank you.
Alderman Vajesi?
Just a quick note, we had an equal opportunity fair housing committee meeting last week, and working over the policies for that, so those should be released fairly soon. And then also the complaint form for the city, if anybody has issues within housing, is now completed. We did have one person come up and receive the form, other than that. And lastly, just thank you to the Macomb Police Department, there was an incident on Calhoun Street last week, and they did a great job as far as taking care of that and getting the person who was involved with that taken care of.
Okay, very good, thank you. Alderman Wayland?
No report, Your Honor.
Thank you. Excuse me, Madam Clerk?
I don't have anything.
I'm not used to looking that direction.
That's okay.
I just have one comment tonight, and usually we'd be giving you a video update regarding the current COVID status. There were six new cases reported today from over the weekend. That brings the current count to 129 total cases here, so obviously, six over the weekend are a little concerning, anytime we're moving in that direction, and I think many of us are in tune with things that are happening across the country where there are identified hotspots, I'm not suggesting where they are yet, but Alderman Carper's suggestion that many people are encouraging the use of face coverings and masks couldn't be more important right now. As we continue in Phase 4 of the Restore Illinois Plan, the use of those things that we can mitigate, social distancing, hand washing, and use of face coverings, make it even more imperative now that we involve that. So again, as much like Mr. Bannon suggested, if you could engage with your sphere of influence and get the word out that we really need folks to take advantage of what we can control in this pandemic, and that's those three things, so any help there would be great. I would like to call an executive session to consider information relative to appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of an employee of the public body or legal counsel for the public body pursuant to Section 2C1 of the Open Meetings Act, and collective bargaining matters between the public body and its employees or representatives or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees pursuant to Section 2C2 of the Open Meetings Act.
Make a motion, go to executive session?
Second.
Moved and seconded to go into executive session. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Cook?
Aye.
G. Carper?
Aye.
Brown Edwards?
Aye.
Moon?
Aye.
Wayland?
Aye.
Vajesi?
Aye.
A. Carper?
Aye.
All ayes.
For the media, we'll take just a few minutes before we go into an executive session, which means that we're going to stay in this room for social distancing purposes, and then we'll ask everyone else who's not a member of the city council or staff to kindly excuse themselves, so.